Hey, everybody. Welcome. Thank you so much for being here. DC Reeves, and before we get started and before I forget to mention this, if anyone would like to speak, we do have a speaker phone right over here. This is Casey Wady right over here. If you'd like to ask a question, any of that, just won't get out of the way. But thank you so much for being here. And certainly appreciate Council President Wiggins. This is my first town hall as mayor, and it's not because I get to walk here or come close to walking here, but my councilman, I want to hear about what's going on in District 7. So as a proud Sanders Beach resident now for a little over a year, I'm certainly proud to be here. Glad, very fitting kickstart of all seven town halls in the rotations to start right here at home. So thank you, guys, for the great turnout and looking forward to answering all the questions that you have for us. So with that, I'll pass over to Council President Wiggins.
Well, good evening. Glad to see each and every one of you. I see some familiar faces, Tanyard Association, Westside Garden District, and many more. So thank you all for coming out, looking forward to the dialogue. I want to brief you on what's going on in District 7 as well as, you know, throughout the city. We do have the city staff here. I'm sure the mayor's going to introduce them as well. So we're looking forward to the dialogue. And again, each and every one, if you want to speak, you have to fill out a speaker card. Did y'all fill that out coming in? If not, the speaker cards are up front. Just grab one. We just asked them to keep it to about three minutes, and we will answer any questions that you guys have. So again, thank you all, and again, we're looking forward to the dialogue. So thank you.
All right, and I was going to try to be a little proactive. When we've got our Public Works Director Amy Toole, we'll do the introductions for all of our awesome department directors and staff, everybody up here, just so you can put a face with a name. And then, once we get done with Adrian, I'm going to go ahead and have Amy give an overview of where we're at with American Creoset Works. I figured that, is that okay with everybody? I figured that, you know, again, I've been part of those conversations. I know that's something that you guys will be interested in. So we'll do introductions, then we'll have Amy kind of just jump right in and give you a little bit of a lay of the land of where we are a day ago. So, you want to start down here, Kelly?
Good evening. My name is Kelsey Powell. I'm the community leader. I'm the Now Reach Coordinator. I work in neighborhood services, and I'm sitting in for neighborhood administration Lawrence South.
Good evening. I'm with the city. I'm with the parking department and city council.
Good evening. I'm with the city council housing director.
Hi, I'm Sharon Morris. I'm the city's development services director.
Good evening. I'm Frederick Benshaw, director of sanitation.
Hi, everyone. I'm Amy Miller, one of the two deputy city administrators for the city council.
Hello, I'm Karen, the deputy city administrator.
Good evening. David, fourth deputy other deputy city administrator.
Good evening, everyone. Police chief.
Good evening. Jenny Kramer, I serve as your property chief.
Amy Toole, Public Works and Facilities Director.
And Adrian Sills, Director of Parks and Recreation City Council.
So I will start it off, I guess, and kick it off, because I know there's a lot of you that are very much interested in what's going on with ACW site. So just as a brief kind of summary of what's been going on and what's ahead, EPA has contracted with CEO, a consultant, to come up with several different concepts of what can be done with that ACW site. They have been working, the CEOs, the consultants, are working with EPA, the city, and the Sanders Beach homeowners association to try to fish out and develop what that would look like. And so we're at the point right now that they have narrowed it down to two different concepts to what that site could look like. And the current option, we have option one that they're looking at, is going to be a level plateau about eight feet above the street level with a four-to-one slide slope. And then the second option, which I think a lot of people had an interest in, was that site where it had the western mound. That's going to be about 16 feet above the street, but then it levels off and does sort of a cascading plateau down to sort of like a sloping amphitheater area. So come February 13th here at Sanders Beach Community Center, there's going to be an open house that EPA is going to be holding along with CEO, and they're going to be offering that citizens can come in and get some more information. There's going to be a survey that should be able to take and provide comments about the different options and what you'd like to see. After those survey results will be due February 27, and CEO will compile that list and bring it back to the city and to the homeowners association subcommittee that's been working along with CEO and the city, and will be determining what is going to be the option that will be chosen to move forward. Once that occurs, then EPA will then get an engineering consultant on board to then get engineering plans for that particular option, and that's when they'll move forward with the process. Right now, we're kind of looking at a timeline that EPA will develop the final plan and award a contract at the end of the summer of this year or the fall of this year. And then site work would begin summer or the fall, winter. That's all very tentative and very much dependent on what EPA, how the process moves along. So that is the biggest timeline that we're going along for right now. The other aspect that probably folks are interested in is, you know, the city's acquiring that property, and the city attorney has enlisted an outside attorney to come help with the procurement of that property through the end-of-doing process. So those are the big high-level stats of where we're at with ACW site.
An add to that, I just want to thank Kelly Hayden and the Sanders Beach community for really working hard and pushing this project forward. For those of you that do not know what the ACW site is, it's just a few blocks north of where we are now. So it's a contaminated site which now is being remedied, and we're continuing to work hard to push this project forward. So again, in February, please come out, look at the renderings that we have available for you. Make any changes that you want to make, because at the end of the day, once we do this, we can't go back and change it. So it's imperative that we get this right, because once they lay that cap down, we can't go back and change it. It's a contaminated site. So we're asking that you guys come out, look at the renderings, pick which one you want, make some changes, and at that point, we'll start the work here at the ACW site. And I want to thank the mayor also for really stepping up and really also pushing this project forward. So we're looking forward to it again. Thank you, Mayor. And Kelly and the Sanders Beach community, thank you so much. But we're counting on y'all, because this is y'all's park. This is going to be, this park is going to be a part of the Sanders Beach community for a very long time. We can't plant any trees. So I want to mention that we can't plant any trees. We can't break that cap once they seal it. But it's some other things that we can do. And also, you got to look at ADA compliance, which we're fighting for that as well. The heights, you got to look at the height too, because, you know, if you are looking at, what was the height requirement on that painting? What was the height?
The 18.
18 feet?
It's dependent on the option. Yeah, it's dependent on the option. So the one with the mound, it looks like about 16 feet above the street level, sort of more of a gentle slope down towards the east. And then the other option is more of a level plateau at eight feet above the street level.
So these are things that we really need your input on, okay? So asking that you guys come out, give us the input, and again, we'll make the, you know, make the adjustments as we see fit. Thank you.
And before we start jumping into questions, I just want to add to a big thank you. You know, things that you don't see in the newspaper or in your day-to-day is how many people are hard at work. If you have any questions about how many people are hard at work at making this happen, just go look at the screenshot of the Zoom of how many people are involved at the city level, at the federal level, in making sure that this is, that we think out every option. Amy, David, and certainly Councilman Wiggins, you know, who has not only been at the ready and available for this particular project, but day or night has been available to us and our staff. And, you know, what my expectation as a District 7 resident is somebody's there to answer the bell for us anytime. And Councilman Wiggins, I can say without question, does that for his district. So I'm very, very appreciative to have him as part of this and trying to get things done in the city of Pensacola and across the finish line. So I appreciate you. Thank you so much. And you want to jump into questions?
So, Dr. Horni. Dr. Horni, you have three minutes.
Well, I'll say about that three, this is my third administration that I have begged, or am begging, for some solutions for flooding in my community. And when you mentioned how this park is going to be 18 feet high and all that storm runoff into people's backyards, how are you going to remediate that since you haven't touched a thing over on the other side in the tanyard? And I have beat my head up every city administration and ECUA about the flooding and the sewage. I don't care what your alleged environmentalist says, I've got the numbers. I have the numbers from my organization, A2, which have pro bono scientists all the way up to FEMA. That's my second point. Why are you allowing this building to go on on not just flood zones, but flood planes? I mean, how are they going to afford insurance? They're going to become just another, I don't know what they'll become. But y'all keep putting, trying to put 50 pounds of mud and 30 pounds of sack, and you haven't even addressed what's going on now. And then most recently, for almost two years, I've asked for those dang spools to be removed from Old Stinky. Well, now it's going to cost you a few thousand dollars because one of them rolled over, hit my truck, put a good dent in it, and cracked my camper shell. So everything in my truck, which is a to-go truck because I deploy, is sopping wet. So I'm real pleased to live in this community. Not because you guys ignore, ignore our community over by Old Stinky. And Mr. Wiggins, look at Government Street. Our, it's not pretty. That, all the green stuff is not green even before the freeze. We need some more eyes on this community if y'all are going to keep putting up, you know, half a million dollar homes and not doing anything for the residents that have been there. I'm really tired of it. Step up, do something, and quit blaming ECUA or ECUA blaming you. It's your position. It's, once the sewage hits the air, it's the city's problem. And I will give you months and months and months of data on that sewage. Don't think for a minute this is cleaned up.
Thank you, Dr. Horni.
Thank you, Dr. Horni. One of the things I do want to let you know is that, inform you of, we don't own ECUA, so we have been trying to find out who those metal spools belong to.
Well, it was on Old Stinky. That's students' property.
Right, so I-
I know who they belong to.
Yes, ma'am. So I reached out to David. We actually researched who actually owns it, so we're still working on that.
I know.
I, I'm just responding to your question.
I've got a picture of it.
Yes, ma'am, and you sent those pictures, so I got them on Twitter.
On the owners, two years ago.
Yes, ma'am. So we're working on that. We do have, I did get with David, we are in the process of scheduling a meeting with ECUA, which I do invite you to attend.
Thank you, but that's not, that wasn't an ECUA get.
Right, but I'm talking about now the flooding issue that's on Belmont, I mean, not on Belmont, but on the Villas. So we're looking at some things, so we're trying to be proactive. So as soon as I get that meeting set up, of course, you will be invited to attend.
Just to add, segue into some of the other stormwater issues were mentioned. So first of all, obviously, the American Creoset Works project has a stormwater requirement, or a stormwater pond built into the entire project. So much so that because of the cap, of trying to cap off this pollution, they cannot allow that ground to be, like you said, we can't have trees put in it. Where you have to really cap that off. So of course, they have to handle, knowing that the ground will not really be taking the penetration of water, and knowing that it's going to have additional, it's going to be hardened more than even just your normal soil would be. They have to plan for that, and of course, that's what they're doing. So closer to the east side of that, closer to F Street, on that direction, there will be stormwater. In addition to that, I really want to give accolades to our team, David and Amy and their team. There was some, there was a Nerdigrind application that was due December 22nd. No promises on this, but you prioritize projects and try to get funded to remediate stormwater, and the number one priority we have is for Sanders Beach. So again, we can't promise that we're going to do that, but we understand some of the needs that we have down here. And so that's what we're looking at moving forward, and certainly we'll keep you posted as far as that goes.
Mr. Todd, good to see you. We have three minutes.
Okay. Believe me, I'll be here. I'll be less than three minutes. To mayor and directors, thank you for being here. I have two items that I want to express concern. One is Fricker Center. It has long been a overdue problem of the city, because there's been no room for expansion. The city and the community have made promises back and forth, but there exists an opportunity with the Baptist property a few blocks north that you can take advantage of. I would hope that you would take a serious look at moving that facility northward and occupying two to three blocks so that the kids will have a playground, the community will have a meeting facility. The remaining property, you can demolish that structure, and you now have another city block that you can use for housing that you already own. So please give thought to that, because now is the opportunity. There's no room for growth in that area, and this opportunity exists right now. So you need to be at the table to take care of that. Second item that concerns me is the civic center. Right now, the city is growing. Tourism is at upper height. We need to take a serious look at our existing civic center. That is a facility that's long overdue to expand. We need an exhibition hall. I could go on and on. But our citizens, a number of them that I've talked to, have complained, because you will find many of them belong to organizations. And every time there's a meeting, they have to pack up and go east, and then from east going south. At some point, we need to bring the rest of Florida up here. So we have Triumph dollars. You know, I don't know about anyone else, but every time I open the newspaper, there's a million peeled off here, three million peeled off here, five million peeled off there. Those are tourism dollars that we can use to do something with that facility that will benefit this entire city. So just please consider that. Those are the two things that were important to me. Thank you.
Mr. Todd, just so you, I really can't dive into the meat and potatoes as far as what we're doing with Pricker, but we are looking at some other avenues that we're fastly approaching, coming up on. We are in talks. We just can't really put it out right now, because it'd be premature for us to do that. But we are being proactive in looking at some things at Pricker Center and possibly, you know, acquiring something else. So we're working on that right now, and as soon as we can get it and get it put out, you'll be the first to know.
All right. Thank you. Yeah, and the second part, I'll just say, even though obviously it's a county-run facility, it's in the city of Pensacola, and I agree with you. You know, at the end of the day, we want to put our best foot forward. It is complicated, obviously, because there's county operations. We, it is inter-tangled with federal interstate, as you probably have read. You know, even, you know, three million dollars to just, to get rid of the off-ramp there that hugs the west side, excuse me, east side of the Bay Center. But I agree, I've had, in some conversations with county and county commissioners, I've echoed the same sentiment. So I think, in one guy's opinion, I think your perception is very accurate that, you know, it's the time now to really even make a decision. Is it, is it to rehab the whole place? Is it to do something more drastic than that? But where we are is not where we need to be. And so anyway, again, that's not something that the city can do on its own, certainly. But know that along your philosophy is the same philosophy I have, which is to try to start to move the ball and get that, get that facility up so we can compete at the regional level for different events, different attractions, meetings, and that sort of thing. I think it's really important for our tourism. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you, Mayor.
Tanyard Neighborhood Association?
I'm John Russwood, board member-at-large of the Tanyard Neighborhood Association. We've just undergone a bunch of internal changes, so we're rebuilding and getting ready to move forward. But at our last meeting, we discussed three issues that we wanted to bring up at this town hall, mostly involving sidewalks and lighting. Sidewalks on, we'd like to see a sidewalk on Club Street that connects Corrin Jones Park to Bruce Beach. There's nothing that goes along there except in front of some of the new houses. And interactive crosswalk on Main Street. It's almost impossible to cross Main Street even at the crosswalks. So the interactive crosswalks like they have on the beach and up on Cervantes, where you push the button and the strobes go off. When that park is done, when the Bruce Beach renovation is done, it would be nice to connect those two parks. And then crosswalks at all four corners of Corrin Jones Park. There's a lot of foot traffic over there. That's a very highly-used playground. A lot of kids go over there constantly. And improved street lighting on government between clubs and divillies. There's street lighting there. It doesn't, it doesn't work. And then I've been told by residents down further on government that it's really dark on government between those two. So if Corrin Jones Park, when I moved here four years ago, it was a beautiful park, and it was sadly neglected after Sally and the pandemic. And in the last eight months, it's really starting to shape up again. They were over there today mowing, but it's being mowed. There's a lot of weed growth underneath everything, so it's not as pretty as it was four years ago, but it's getting there. But it's still constantly used. It's packed all the time, especially on weekends. So there's a lot of kids that come from the western part of the tanyard and cross A Street. I'm not there. No crosswalks, no nothing. So if you guys could work at that, that would be awesome. Thank you.
So thank you just to address a couple of those items that you mentioned. I just wanted to bring forward that we do have a local agency project coming. Actually, the design is for West Main Street from Clubs to Corringus. So we are looking forward to getting that design kicked off. We just selected a consultant this past week, so go from council next month, and then we get them going. So there's going to be some major multiple improvements along Main Street in that area, which is starting at Clubs. So that's something that we're really, really excited about. The survey design is anticipated to take about 12 months, and then going into that, we'll be going into, looking to get some funding through the railroad, because that's the challenge right there as well, is having the railroad. But I appreciate the confidence that something will definitely be taken look at with respect to the crosswalks in there. In terms of Club Street, I'll check into the sidewalks to see if my city engineer has any kind of gap projects for that location. If not, I'll bring it to his attention. But what we also have going along, along Club Street is, that's going to be part of the Bruce Beach Phase Two project, is redoing Club Street there from south of Main Street, where it's all torn up going into Transontane. So going to really rebuild that and get that back into shape from where we're preparing for Bruce Beach Phase Two, which is, I'm going to add some additional parking along in there and help with the amenities of Bruce Beach as a whole. And so Club Street, we have that actually out for advertisement now. We are looking for contractors. I think the app has an end next week. So we're going to need that one. We're only looking for Bruce Beach Phase Two and get the road fixed right in there. Let's see, the last thing, I think you mentioned crosswalks. Well, second to last thing, crosswalks all around Corrin Jones Park. We'll take a look at that, and I'll hit with my assistant public works director, who kind of heads that in terms of the traffic and transportation. So I'll get hands and kind of review that and see where we're at in terms of that and what we can do to make that more visible. And then the last, and I think I might have missed part of it. I think there was some street lighting along Government Street. I don't know, have you reported that in terms of, is there street lights out and they're just not going?
Because there's a bunch of street lights on Government on the south side, yeah, south side.
And they're on.
And they're not on. I don't know if those have been reported or not. This is stuff that we brought up by residents.
Okay, we'll definitely put in requests off of my traffic, my operations manager. Take a look and see, and we'll report it to FPNL as FPL thing, or if it's the neighborhood in the city, we'll take a look at that. Just to let everybody know, in terms of the FPL lights throughout the city, we have a project going on with FPNL. They're going to be converting all of the old halogen lights and converting them to the LED lights. So that is finally, I think, within the next couple of weeks, getting kicked off. And my assistant public works director's been working with FPNL and trying to make sure that we fairly distribute the start of that program throughout the city and all the different districts. So we're not just starting one district. We're trying to fairly take a look at the areas that are really major concern. That would get a lot of feedback from residents about the safety issues of the lighting. Once we do that, we're, the plan is to then do an evaluation and just kind of take a look and see what the gaps are in terms of the street lighting. But we really anticipate that once they convert, move to LED lights, we're going to see a big difference in terms of making sure that we have that coverage of street lights throughout the area. So I'm very much looking forward to that in terms of being able to light up our city again and have the safe roadways for pedestrians, motorists, and bicyclists.
And one add-on, actually, David and I had a conversation last night. I know the ball's starting to roll on those lights at Corringus. I saw the same thing. So, but understand, again, I didn't know this until a few years ago. You know, you assume every light, every street light you see is something that we can fix. Some are FPL, some are the city. So that's not to, you know, be invasive and get them fixed. And certainly, we lean on them as well if it's something, not a light that we control. But we don't control every light in the city. Sometimes it adds a little layer of complexity. But I know we're, you know, getting, moving the ball forward on that.
With the city light, we have a 48-hour turnaround response time that we have internally. Just to, just to state, if it's a city light, we have a 48-hour internal response time. So if anyone contacts the city of Pensacola and says, hey, there's a street light out and actually a city-owned light, within 48 hours or two business days, we will make sure that light is up. When it comes to FPL, we immediately contact our partners over there. I won't continue to ping them. They do a great job of responding when they can, but obviously, we can't, we're going to only ask them and coordinate with them. But for the city lights, we have a 48-hour, two-business-day response time.
Mr. Harold Homely?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Council, who's in charge of the street department here?
Public Works, go ahead with your question. We'll see to do our best answer.
Number one, uh, I have a dream of Pensacola. And I've done a fair amount of traveling. And I don't want to say I know everything, but I know what I've seen. And the west side of Pensacola has been ignored as obvious. Yacht Club has had imperative contact with controlling the city of Pensacola to the point, and this goes to the EPA being manipulated to divert water from L Street where there's natural springs over to K Street. K Street in the last five years is a cesspool. There's no other way to put it. The yacht club has their junior sailing. The yacht club's wanting to bring in a $50 million sailboat. And I can't help it. When was the last time you were at the yacht club?
Been a while.
Huh?
I live pretty close to it, but it's been a while, yeah.
But are you a member?
I'm not.
Your daddy is.
Yeah, he is.
Well, what I'm here to say is, there's a bigger picture for Pensacola, but we've got narrow sights on our face. For an example, I want you to write this down, entertaining a roundabout at Barrancas and L. There's lots of things that we could do. Another thing, it's not an if, but a when, Bell Steel's going to relocate. What about the lumber company? I mean, it's like a farmer, when he finds out his land's worth $10 million an acre, he ain't farming. And as far as the ACW, I say it's still a flip of the coin in many avenues, because I've dealt with Peter Thor. Peter's not on his A game. There was a guy way back by the name of Mark Fight that we need to bring back into the picture. He still works for the EPA. And this guy and I, we were communicating very well 20 years ago, but like most government people, he's going to climb that ladder with the government, which is good for him, but it really sucked for us because we had, there's been about six different plans. But there's never any lead in the pencil. And the 30 or 40 million they have is not enough. And if you look at Barrancas Avenue, which is a drainage problem, Main Street, Government Street, let's just say south of Garden, including Garden Street, is a drainage problem. And like Mr. Wiggman said, if you don't do it right this time, you're stuck. And we need to hire more than one engineer. This ACW, he, he throws a subcommittee out there. There is no committee, let alone a real true Sanders Beach organization. So we have a subcommittee representing me. That's ridiculous. Oh, and she happens to be a bartender. Well, I've got a lot of engineering, I've got a lot of knowledge. I'm a retired city fire fighter and I've done landscaping pretty much my whole life. But I commend y'all for trying, but a lot of y'all are just misguided because of the lack of the true necessary info. And I mean, I love this town. I bought a house in 1973. I was 20 years old, couldn't even put in my own name. So I put in my parents' name till I was legal age. And my family's been in this area for 130 years. There's got to be some amount of pride that I sense that y'all do not sense about Sanders Beach. About 100 years ago, this area was known as Little Norway because it was a bunch of poor Norwegians. Does anybody know where Perdido Wharf was? Did?
I, yeah, I grew up in Perdido Key, yeah.
Where?
No, I, I'm saying I grew up in Perdido Key. That is what I'm telling you.
No, Perdido Wharf's at the end of A Street. Do the history and know the geography. But like Adore is fixing to build up on Main Street. Are they contributing to this stormwater problem?
I, I can't, I can't, I don't know that development.
I can't hear.
I don't know that development. I can't speak to it.
Well, it's a big project straight due north here, okay, on Main Street. But if we can work with, I think it's called Pro Bill, I call it Ausley Lumber Company. I've been there as many as eight times in one day when I was rebuilding my house in 88. But I'm just saying, we've got to work with Bell Steel. We, and probably ought to try to get some incentives to where we could at least move them on the other side of Pace Boulevard where it's more industrial.
Well, Mr. Homely, we definitely appreciate.
I know I could talk for five hours right now, but I'm begging the mayor, you still owe me a case of beer.
Well, Mr. Mr. Homely, Homely?
You got my number?
I got your number. I'm gonna give you a call. Thank you so much, sir.
You won't be the first man. Oh, yes, you will.
Well, well, I'm out of the beer business, so unfortunately it's more expensive for me. But I appreciate your comments. And look, at the end of the day, we're all passionate about the city of Pensacola. So, um, I appreciate you being here and sharing your thoughts.
Want to light a cigarette?
Uh, no, you can't.
You go, I'll be the first person with alcohol in your favor and rock the association for smoking on city property. I will claim.
All right.
Oh, the other thing, we've got a special going to 80-day boat march. It needs gradually.
Good, appreciate it. And I wouldn't do it right next to the police officers, but that's, that's just one guy's opinion.
Mr. Joe Lean, Lean, Leanin?
I don't know if I pronounced that right, sir.
Thank you for being here.
It's not your pronunciation, it's my reading skills. Lennon.
Lennon, I'm sorry.
Well, first, I want to thank you all for being here. I think it's great to have this opportunity to speak in front of you and you to speak to us. Uh, so thank you. Uh, I appreciate it. And so the reason I'm here is I'm a resident of Pensacola, room in, um, Garden, or, or, uh, Government Street. And the, the meeting opened up with Dr. Hornig, talking about sewage and flooding. And I've got to tell you, I've been in this town for 23 years, not as long as this gentleman over here, but around enough to know that the area I chose to buy in is a flooding issue, significant flooding issue. We have significant sewage questions and concerns in the area, right? We've heard about it a couple of times. So my question to you all is, is there something happening that I don't know about? I, I hear concerns, but, and thank you for the feedback, uh, but I didn't hear if there's something going on with that, and I'd love to hear that. And before you go there, the second point I brought up, I want to bring up, is in my experience in the city, and I understand ECUA, which kind ties into this, um, is a separate organization. But as kind of, as a citizen, I look towards this group to help me navigate that process, right? So I understand they're separate. Can you also speak to the fact how we can together work to make these things happen seamlessly? So people don't look at the city because ECUA is not doing its job, or vice versa. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for the questions. And I'm going to let, um, David answer some of the, the first part, some of the technical aspects of it. But I will say, um, we're in conversations with ECUA and, 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 I said this about education, I say about our military base, which is, we, there's really two stances you can take. You can say that's not us, or you can do your best to say, you know, we don't run the education system, but it affects us, and we don't run the military base and it affects us. So I understand that. And, and what I'll tell you is, myself, the councilman, or any staff up here, does not take the tact that that's not our job, you know? Um, so yes, of course, there's limitations on what ECUA controls and what we don't. And I'll tell you a couple of things in our conversation. David can give you details about the new, the testing that's coming in February, um, with, uh, what we hope to see continued improvement, drastic improvement of what was found that you may have read about under Spring and Garden, um, in terms of wastewater. But one thing that I know, I mentioned the NERDA grant funding earlier, the NERDA grant funding that ECUA, my understanding, has put in for, is one of our big issues that we have to deal with in the city in terms of, um, contamination is actually the laterals that are going from homes. And, um, I, I do not claim to be an expert in it. I'll, I'll tell you what I know, which is, there's some estimates that say at least half of the contamination that happens isn't necessarily from what you think about as a traditional break in a sewer main that's under the street, that's controlled by ECUA. Much of it are act, actually the laterals that come from our homes that under law, you know, we control, that technically is our property, um, that actually go out to the main. So if a tree root comes through, if something breaks, your lateral going in, well, you're not inspecting it. I'm not, I haven't inspected mine lately, you know, uh, and, and that contamination is happening, uh, because that's really outside of the ECUA's purview. So I do know that that's, uh, something that they are addressing and certainly something as a community for contamination overall that we have to address. So it's not always in the traditional sense that you saw at Spring and Garden where we say, oh, we found a break, you know, here it is, great, we're going to improve. There's some, there's some nuance to it. That is complicated and is expensive, but I do, last I heard, um, I can't speak for ECUA, I know conversations I've had with them, that that was going to be one of their top priorities on the NERDA grant funding side, is to get funding that would allow us to help alleviate some of the issues we have with laterals, including helping people pay for any improvements i- if they're in situations of financial need and all of those kinds of things. So again, um, I, I can't tell you what they're going to do, but I know that they're aware of that. And, um, as I said, I'll let David kind of speak to the, um, the, what we know is happening now in terms of the contamination. Yeah, go ahead.
Before you pass over David, did you, what, what grant are you speaking to? Sorry?
It's NERDA, I'm going to, is it, it's N-R-D-A, um, I believe is the, um, yeah, is that right?
Yeah, I, I, I'll be hon, I'll be honest, I can't remember the acronym for it, but it is, it's, I don't want to do.
Yeah, it's not N-E-R-D-A, I believe it's N-R, N-R-D-A. And it closed December, application's closed December 22nd. So again, I give.
Resources Damage Assessment is over.
Yeah, say it again.
It's NERDA, which is a natural.
That, that's for.
Okay.
There you go.
It is N-R-D-A, which is a Natural Resources Damage Assessment grant is what the, and as the mayor, I really can't say much better than what the mayor's already said, uh, regarding, um, our collaboration with our partners at, you know, ECUA and FDEP. Um, but we are, we have been, uh, testing, um, our lines and, and they've been testing their lines with our, uh, partners at FDEP. They've had a, a couple tests, uh, so far. They're having a third test this February. I don't think we have a date, uh, or dates established yet, but we should be getting those tests to fur, fur, further, um, corroborate previous results. As well as your comments to stormwater, we do have a stormwater master plan that was generated, I think, back in the late 2019, uh, 18 time range. Um, that's something that our public works facilities department utilizes as our prioritization plan to addressing stormwater in the entire city, uh, district. So, uh, thank, thankfully to our, um, our city council, that they provide us, um, well, the taxpayers provide us through, um, appropriation by the city council, uh, roughly $3 million a year that we use towards stormwater improvements throughout the city of Pensacola. So, uh, Director Toodle and her team used that plan and they, you know, ultimately, you know, we, we at times will have to leverage those funds for, for grant dollars, as the mayor said, or we use those funds actually for new or improved stormwater system, um, improvements throughout the city of Pensacola. $3 million goes a long way. Obviously, we'd love to have more. Um, I think it's a $300 million total stormwater retrofit. If we had all the money available to us today, about $300 million to address all the stormwater in the city of Pensacola. So every, um, every, uh, $3 million gets closer to that, right? But, uh, it's definitely, it's definitely a tall task.
My understanding from city council in December, maybe I have it wrong, David, I think you were there, was that money is not going to cover the work that needs to be done in the Baptist, the area where we play, where we're creating the Baptist organization, uh, for housing. I thought a lot of money's being used to build that out.
I don't think so.
Um, no? Are you speaking about the tax credit? Maybe, that might be who you're speaking to, Mr. London, like, totally possible.
Yeah. I, I don't, I don't know of any, yeah, stormwater project around Baptist that would be on the city's obligation that I know of. I mean, obviously, there's your normal obligations with private. If I go build a building, I have a stormwater requirement, but.
Yeah, I thought it was with the infrastructure to tile, now, if big buildings there, there are going to be, come these blocks.
Yeah.
And I thought with the infrastructure for that, the city had committed those dollars.
Now, yeah, sorry. So the only dollars we had committed, I can give kind of an update on this, I mentioned, we just found out, uh, the only dollar, dollars we had committed was for, uh, the municipal participation in a federal tax credit for them to build attainable housing at that location. So, um, we just, unfortunately, just heard word, um, that, that, um, the two tax credit things that we contributed our portion to, we did not get. Um, but we will put in again, that, that is not unusual. They are hard to get in, uh, again, eight, uh, around the state of Florida, there were 52 applications for one of them, that only eight were selected. And for the second project, there were 44 applications and only eight were accepted. So, um, it takes several years, uh, but we had set aside a $460,000, um, for, uh, our portion of being able to get that federal, uh, tax credit to the developer to make sure. That had requirements for the, for how much income someone can make and what the rent is going to be. So we helped, you know, basically subsidize the ability to keep that in the attainable, affordable pool. So, uh, but, uh, my early inclination, understanding is, uh, that these developers are actually, you know, ready, at the ready to give it another go, uh, in 2023. And the dead, deadline's actually sooner this time. It's actually in August or September. Um, so obviously that's a conversation that, uh, that we will have with council and that, that we would have to make another decision on if that's the right thing to do moving forward. Uh, but that would, that would, the only dollars I know of at this moment that we had pledged, uh, in terms of the Baptist project.
Thank you, Mayor.
I can speak to a couple of the stormwater projects.
Yeah, go, fire away.
Because you, you mentioned stormwater. So there are a couple of projects we have going on in the area. Um, we have one project, Long Break this afternoon, from E to L, for some drainage improvements. We let that project out, um, forbid last year and last year, and unfortunately, we've got zero bids on it, no projects we've bid on. And it's a challenge we've seen, um, in the past couple of years with COVID and such. Um, so we're going to try to re-let that project here, um, in the summer. Um, I'm hopeful that, unfortunate with the, the, the housing interest rates and everything going up in development. So again, I'm hopeful that maybe we can get some contractors back out to bid on some of our projects. So maybe we'll start seeing some more movement. We have seen that in the past, um, month or so. So I'm encouraged and we're going to keep pressing to try to get some of these projects out. And, um, because I can tell you, my city engineer is very passionate about drainage and he wants to get these projects out of the city. Uh, another project that we do have is, I, I talked about the local agency project with West Main Street, um, to try to capitalize on that and try to, um, be able to only, you know, work in that envelope once. We're also going to incorporate some drainage designs I know, since the city is, um, we, you know, on our side, to try to hopefully incorporate it. So when we do go to construction, that we can not only have multi-modal, um, elements addressed, that maybe we can address some of the drainage aspects that are going on along those. Now, that's still, you know, you, you know, a couple of years away, but we're trying to get that design started now. Uh, so those are a couple of things. Um, Garden Street, I think somebody mentioned Garden Street. DFT does have a project that they're, um, undergoing right now in terms of the design, and they're going to be addressing a lot of the drainage issues on Garden Street as well. So I'm very encouraged with that. They've come to the table and we've given them our feedback on that. So I think there's quite a few. I know it's not, um, everything, um, but we are diligently working towards trying to address the stormwater issues within the city and especially in Sanders Beach. And I think as the mayor's alluded to, we are going after grants. Um, and so I think we're very positioned in a very good spot to be able to try to get some of these, um, federal dollars and state dollars to try and help, um, to get some of these projects and off the shelf and, and into fruition. So.
Thank you, Amy. And, uh, what I want to do now, we don't have any more speakers, but I do, I would like for the, uh, chief police, uh, to give us an update on, on crime and safety and followed by, uh, Ms. Marcy, uh, to speak on some of the, uh, housing, uh, initiatives that we're doing, as well as the, uh, citizens programs that we do offer. So I'm gonna start with the chief and then, uh, turn it over to Ms. Marcy. Thank you.
Well, good evening. Just to give you an update on crime here in the city of Pensacola. Uh, we have some official crime stats for, uh, 2022. Uh, as we finish up the data for that, it looks like we might, we might see around a 10% reduction in violent crime, 4% reduction overall. Um, some of the things that we're seeing that are driving our crime overall is a lot of, um, retail theft and property crimes. But with, with, with retail theft leading, leading the pack, uh, retail theft is, um, shoplifting, things of that nature, um, and so are businesses. businesses and stuff like that. Uh, from violent crime standpoint, we have a very, um, vigorous focus, uh, over on the at the court area, that's where we had the homicide over there in June of, of last year. So we're kinda in a focus area for the, for the, for the police department and for the city, um, not only just at the court, but surrounding neighborhood as well. So some of the things that we've done over there, we've kinda looked at, uh, crime prevention and violent crime design, uh, did, did what we call a SEPTEN survey, a SEPTEN, uh, analysis of that area, kinda looking for some of the natural things within the environment to try and help improve quality life within the neighborhood and surrounding area. So we looked at trees, we looked at lighting, we looked at some of the natural designs, the streets, uh, sidewalks, things of that nature, uh, worked in conjunction with, with parks and rectory identified on the outskirts where some of the streetlights were, um, being, um, the reflection of the lights being inhibited by some of the, the brush and driveway that are overgrown, so we can kinda take some of that stuff out there. But also making recommendations about switching some of the lights over to LED, which is, which creates a, a much brighter and a much sense of, uh, calm, trust if something happens. You know, a lot of things, people try to do things in the dark that they wouldn't do during the light. So I think switching on the LED in some of our neighborhoods is gonna help, um, provide positive impact. Uh, our staffs have worked really, really hard, uh, from the sworn sign of house to our telecommunicators to our professional staff, um, we have a whole department and a whole government approach to address things in, in the community. Um, when we look at issues in the community, it's not just some of the things we come up from the police department, but we talk and reach out to our residents as well. Um, I'd like to get a lot of feedback from the community as well about issues that are going on, so we can kinda take a look at some of the low hanging fruit and address them immediately. Um, and some of the things that we do and some of the solutions that we have have come from straight feedback from the community as well, and some, some of the solutions take a little bit of time as, as well. So also right now, we're looking at, uh, studying our beach structure. So our patrol areas, the whole city's divided into eleven beaches, with, with the eleven beach and the airport. So right now, we're working with our university partner, University of West Florida, to kinda look at how our cities divide when it comes to patrol sectors, we can look at how we're deploying our resources in that aspect. Uh, just recently, we, um, worked with our CRA district and city council to be able to add two new officers to the CRA district to provide extended range coverage into the, uh, nights and weekends to be able to do some things. Also this week, we, um, worked with the downtown improvement board, CRA, to provide some specialized training when it comes to crime prevention for a number of officers, definitely a great benefit to, uh, the whole community, not just the CRA district, but the whole community as well. Where a few items and things, you wanna be very proactive about crime prevention at your home or your business, we'll be able to have, um, also get a, a national certified in ways to come out and do an assessment of your location, be able to provide some pointers and recommendations on how to make your home or your business a harder target and a lot safer. Um, we're recruiting, um, uh, just some of the numbers right now, off the top of my head, we have fourteen people in the academy, uh, four in field training, four to start Monday, there are, uh, certified officers that are going through the certification process for, that they're going to field train. So twenty-two new police officers right here in the city, um, over the next month or so, that'll be getting on the street, out in the neighborhood. Um, was there any questions?
No, he's passed that down to, well, while we're passing it to Marcy, I'll tell you, um, just reminded me, so I got back from, uh, Washington DC, US Conference of Mayors, there's two hundred and fifty mayors from around the country, um, and if I could boil down what the four greatest issues are, you just heard one and, or close to one, and, um, you're about to hear about another. It's, it all comes in different forms, uh, based on your city, obviously unique challenges, but, uh, I can generalize and say that every mayor in the United States of America's dealing with four main issues, uh, right now. More than four, but we have these four in common. Fentanyl, recruiting and retention of your police officers, affordable housing and homelessness, those, and so there, different levels of that, different issues. And I just wanna tell you, as I sat in a room with a bunch of mayors talking about, um, recruitment and retention, um, that, that's always gonna be, you know, a challenge for, uh, for, for any community, especially right now. Um, and so number one, you'll, you leave that meeting being really, really grateful for the people that, um, that protect us every day. Um, yeah. We got Chief Randall and two at the back. When you hear some of the numbers of how many people, how many officers, some of these larger, uh, police, uh, police forces are down, um, makes you really, really thankful that although we're always striving, uh, to get, you know, to make sure that we're as full as possible, and I know we're, we've got a concerted effort that, um, it is absolutely plaguing, um, some of the cities across the country. Um, but just to let you know, um, those are four things top of mind and certainly as the infrastructure bill and some of these things coming from the federal level, there's a lot of hyper-focus, uh, on some of those issues. Fentanyl, one, they said one person's dying every five minutes, uh, in the United States of America. And more funding and more resources coming because of, of just how drastic of an issue that is right now in the United States, and, um, and certainly we are not immune to that here, if you look at the data that was shared. So anyway, appreciate you, um, Chief Randall for bringing that up, and Marcy in housing, we'll give, give you an update, uh, as far as attainable housing.
Yeah, I really want to start out with, um, the ECUA, um, the, um, our response to ECUA, I'm gonna bet you all received the notification from them about your lateral connection. I think, um, David alluded to that earlier. What we did is we partnered with ECUA, and that spreadsheet, everybody that then had mailed those notices to, and then we went through that sheet, and if you are a homeowner, resident, and income qualifying, we can help with those costs to cover that lateral connection. So, um, we mailed letters to everyone, and I made it appear tonight, and I heard that they were beginning to send out the next batch of letters to contact ECUA to make sure that that contact information from our office is available for those income qualifying residents. And then to speak to Council President Wiggins', um, request, the city has been working on inbuilt housing program, which will be a homeownership opportunity. In the near future, we should have two projects, one will be, um, new construction, the other one is gonna be a rehab of existing property. And what we'll be doing is once those projects get bid, then we'll be offering to income qualifying homeowners to purchase those homes. And it's gonna be through a, it'll be an online application process, and then all the applicants are gonna be put into this spreadsheet, and the city auditing company is then gonna rank those to a random ranking, and then we'll start working down that list, one, two, three, four, and qualify. The other thing we're doing too, is you all have, the mayor's very interested in pursuing grant opportunities. In the state, we hope in the near future, is gonna be releasing this information regarding, um, grant opportunities to create rental housing. This is all in response to her and Sally. So we're watching those opportunities very, very closely, because that's, we all know we need both homeownership and rental opportunities in our community. Did you have a hand, specific, Council President?
Well, thank you so much, I appreciate it. Mayor, uh, I, I know earlier this week, uh, you were speaking about, uh, Amtrak coming.
Yeah.
Can you just give us a brief update on that?
Sure. Um, so in Washington, there's, uh, there was a whole, um, kinda breakout session on the future rail, there's, uh, in this current presidential administration and the infrastructure bill that, that we're, uh, about to see, uh, there's been a, a big emphasis on the modernization of passenger rail. Um, you know, it's kind of interesting, you know, you hear a lot about, you know, how good the passenger rail is in Europe and in other countries and that, you know, we're behind. It was interesting to learn that, you know, we have significantly, significantly more actual mileage of rail than anyone in the world. Uh, we just haven't emphasized and utilized it as a passenger rail. Amtrak was started basically by the government in nineteen seventy-one, um, and they, uh, from a money standpoint, the long game is understand that rail is going to be a subsidy. I mean, a- at the end of the day, unless you're in the northeastern corridor, if you're in Washington DC, basically up to Boston, you know, it, it's probably a profitable venture, uh, given all the frequency and the proximity of those large metropolitan areas. Uh, but in terms of passenger rail, uh, in other places, it's, it's tougher. That being said, uh, there is money coming down, um, from the federal government to help bolster passenger rail outside of that northeast corridor, including, um, there were really, the CEO of Amtrak mentioned two, uh, areas. One, I, I, I forget the, uh, the non-northeast corridor emphasis points. One was, I believe, out west, I could have that wrong, but the second was the Gulf Coast. Um, and you may have noticed, uh, in recent weeks that the city of Mobile had just, um, gotten its Amtrak service back. Uh, of course, I, I grew up, um, you know, having Amtrak here, and you know, of course that ended in two thousand four, two thousand five. Um, and interesting tidbit you learn up there is, it ac- it never actually ended, it just has been, uh, a fancy word of saying postponed, you know, that wasn't ever permanently closed for probably some, you know, government, you know, red tape type reasons to make sure that if they ever were to restore it, it would be a little bit easier. So, uh, where we're at today, um, there, there was money set aside, um, that actually by the National Rail Association, not in the infrastructure bill, that deadline's March twenty-third, we will be applying for it, it's a five hundred thousand dollar grant to basically plan. So it's half a million dollars to the city of Pensacola to figure out if we could do this. Um, so, uh, we have Amy LaVoy in our finance department, uh, we are, we are starting our first grants office in the city of Pensacola, two people, we should have that, uh, we should have them on board, I would guess in the next thirty days. Um, somebody needs to wake up every single morning, as y'all heard me say during the campaign, thinking about how to bring money to the city of Pensacola, and so, um, that's what we're gonna do. Our, plenty of folks up here have written, have been operating organizations, managing employees, leading day-to-day projects, and oh, by the way, will you make sure that you grab this grant? And they've done such a good job, every grant you've ever heard of in the last few years has been under that model. So we're gonna take a little bit of that pressure off and get more urgent about bringing federal and state dollars here. So, um, we are going to go after that five hundred thousand dollars, and so the New Journal wrote that article, and I got about fifteen phone calls in North Florida saying, what do you know about this Amtrak? Uh, so someone in Walton County called me, the mayor of Tallahassee called me, um, and so now, uh, we've started to have conversations about putting basically a Pensacola-Jacksonville kinda coalition together, um, that we would all be signing the letter and we'd all be putting in for the, the five hundred thousand. And I've been joking with our staff, I said, I love that idea, not only because the collective, the collaboration's really good, but if it ever enters Florida, I have a pretty good sneaking suspicion we're gonna be included. I don't know how they're gonna get in from, uh, the, from Mobile, Alabama without coming to Pensacola. So, uh, so that, that coalition is good for a lot of reasons. Um, so I, I said, I'll take every mayor and decision maker east of Tallahas- or west of Tallahassee, and the mayor of Tallahassee will go from Tallahassee to Jacksonville, we're gonna get everybody. Um, so I've got phone calls lined up, uh, with all of those folks. So what does that mean? We could bat this around for a year, a couple of years, I, no promises on it, if it's gonna happen. Um, what I'll tell you as the board chair of this Pensacola is that at least three of our ten perennial, uh, tourism, um, sources would be along a corridor from New Orleans to Pensacola. So you talk about Mobile, which is always one of our two or three largest, uh, tourist cities that come here, and of course, New Orleans and some of the other places in between. Uh, so, uh, you know, we're gonna pursue it as, as far as we can, we know it'll take a subsidy, we think that, that maybe if we can get thi- this first step, we can start to have conversations in Tallahassee and banding together in North Florida, be able to see if we can convince at the state or federal, federal level to, for that subsidy. But if we're ever gonna do it, the emphasis on passenger rail is now, sixty-six billion dollars coming from the infrastructure grant to be able to, to fund it. So I can tell you this, if we, if we look at it and we can't get it, we wouldn't have gotten it five years ago, and we probably aren't gonna get it five years from now, the time is now to look into this. So, um, you know, please don't go tell your friends, I promise we're bringing Amtrak rail yet. Uh, I've been texting about that a couple of times, I promise that's not what it, that we're doing, but we are gonna get very urgent about making sure that we don't miss opportunity.
Thank you. If you don't mind, Council President, I just wanna take the opportunity, um, just to expand a little bit more on what Ms. Whitaker was mentioning, there are multiple, um, assistance programs the city of Pensacola offers, and I wanna make, take the time just to list a couple of them and some phone numbers, if you wanna maybe jot these down in your phone, or if you have a pen and paper, um, make sure you, uh, jot these down, because, um, Ms. Marcy's literature through the housing office she's already mentioned, um, I guess, housing, uh, affordable housing, you know, program, we also provide the residential rehab home program, we also have the home buyer assistance program, and I can speak a little bit more on that if you want, and the phone number for that would be, for the housing department is eight five zero, eight five eight, zero, three, five, zero, it can't hurt to call and ask, eight five zero, eight five eight, zero, three, five, zero. And through Ms. Director Morris in the CRA office, we have, uh, three, um, programs that we also offer, one being a residential resiliency program, is to help harden your, uh, property, um, to be more resilient. We also have a residential, uh, property improvement program, and we also have a commercial property improvement program. So, uh, the phone number for the CRA office is eight five zero, four, three, six, five, six, four, zero, eight five zero, four, three, six, five, six, four, zero. Again, you just can't, it can't hurt to ask the question, and we'll do everything we possibly can to steer in the right direction. But we do have s- uh, several financial assistance programs, and, uh, if nothing else, if you can promote that to your neighbors, uh, we can try to help, um, help provide as much assistance as possible, so.
How about update on the playground? Play, on the playground at Sanders Beach?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, that's probably more, uh, still.
Marcy, will you hand us that wireless mic? No, this way.
It's hard, it's hard.
No one drop it.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, and I'll thank you, citizens coming out, um, Amy Sills, Director Parks and Recreation, uh, update on our playground here at Sanders Beach, it's about ninety percent completed. Um, and we're, we're excited about it, uh, uh, the one thing that we wanted to make sure we did was to, to upgrade that area, repairs on the area, there's some damage too from storms, along with the boil mark area. So, um, we're excited about it, we'll have a grant, you know, very soon, uh, with that particular playground area. There's several areas, um, that we're also addressing, as, as far as the western town is concerned, and I wanted to kinda share a little bit of that with you guys. Um, well, gentlemen, I mentioned something about Chloe Jones' park, and, uh, we're starting to, uh, get the opportunity now, we outsource a lot of our, uh, parks as far as, we have ninety-four of them, so it's very difficult, it would be impossible for our department to be able to take care of all ninety-four of those parks. So we do outsource a lot of those, but we're trying to go back behind some of those particular areas and get, uh, those parks in a condition of soul, in a position where, um, they can be, uh, more refined, uh, they can sustain a little bit more of the traffic, uh, we have a huge increase in the number of participants, uh, in the sports, and, and we have sports advisors around the city that do and run our sports programs, not all of them, but most of them. So the difficult part about grass, and, and you guys, everybody's got a lawn, and you keep running all the same part of your lawn with your, with your car, and you pull into your driveway, what's gonna happen to your grass? Same thing happened to the parks. Um, we want to see views, we wanna have everybody enjoying the quality life in the city of Pensacola, it's a big part of it, is our, our parks and how they kept up, so we're gonna do our best, uh, in the coming months, as we start to get into distinct seasons, grass starts to take off, to, uh, do, you'll see us kind of doing soul cycling, trying to do something about the, the, uh, helping the soil soils of the grass, and come back once in a meantime, uh, get, uh, clean for the grass in the room. So you'll see a lot of that going on. Uh, some of the other areas with the dog park, obviously, Quinlan's Park, um, there's been a big question, a lot of different sports, pickleball is getting very, very popular right now, so we're working on trying to produce areas where that can take place. Um, Armstrong Park is, there's a tennis court there that we're now in the process of putting lines down, pickleball. Um, House Community has got a tennis courts there, uh, we're looking at the, the possibility of being able to repair those surfaces and also, uh, be able to pitch all there, so, um, we're excited about what's going on, uh, the playground is, we keep here, it's just about completed, and, uh, we, we appreciate you, but we, we get calls from citizens all the time about their particular park or sporting, uh, activities and, and others, so, um, we look forward to entertaining any other area that you wanna, uh, reach out to our department and, and local tire experts.
Phone number.
Phone number, yours? Um, you can, you can reach us, uh, you can tweet one-one if you've got issues or certain different things, but you can definitely reach our department by the, uh, eight five zero, four, three, six, uh, fifty-six, seventy-nine, and I, I can't, uh, definitely direct it, uh, for taking so long right on that.
Thank you, Adrian, and just 'cause I'm looking this way, uh, you know, we were talking about the police department, everything they do, Chief Crainer. Chief Crainer, um, I was just thinking, you know, nobody, nobody calls on her unless something's on fire. But, uh, I can, I can tell you that, um, if you don't know, you have one of the top one percent of fire departments in the United States of America. Um, and not only is that what we know it's important, and I'll say with my one, uh, example, uh, they were called to my next door neighbor's house and I think they were there in about eight seconds. Uh, so I've tested it, uh, by accident in Sanders Beach. And, um, they're on top of it. And I want you to, not only is that important for our public safety, but if you didn't know, that, uh, your home insurance is affected by their rating. So if they were not one of the top one percent, you would be paying more money, um, for your home insurance. So, uh, not only are they keeping you safe, they're, uh, saving you a, a couple of nickels on your, uh, uh, on your home insurance as well. So I just want to give you another shout out. And I really want to say, I don't, let, come from the closer, but what I can tell you in two months in this small sample size is everybody up here that's sitting up here is working their tail off for you. Um, and, uh, you know, we won't, we won't, uh, make every decision perfect. We won't, uh, we, we're always gonna be, uh, coachable. It's why we're here. Uh, we get a lot of good feedback from you. And I will take some of the feedback from, um, tonight and, and make sure that we go back and that we're emphasizing that and, and looking into those things. Um, so these are, I, I think, a necessary part and a, an obligation that we have, uh, certainly as the mayor and the city staff, uh, to be here. This is, uh, part of our job. Uh, but just know that, um, you know, everybody up here got in at, at eight in the morning. And, um, you know, we can keep working and keep grinding. And I, I, they won't say it, but I can say it for them. And as someone who's new to this building, that every single person up here is intentional in working their tail off to make Pensacola a great place, um, to live. So I just want to say, uh, in front of you guys, in front of everybody watching, that how appreciative I am, uh, to have people that lead our departments and lead our organizations that, um, do the work that they do. So thank you, guys. Um, thank you so much for everything that you're doing.
And if any of you want to contact the mayor, raise your hand, Alex.
Yeah.
Call Alex. He does a great job of. But, uh, again, thank you all for coming out. We truly, truly appreciate you coming out and sharing your information with us, uh, your concerns. Uh, again, if there's anything that I can do, please, please let us know. We want to, we're here to work with you and for you. And we want the betterment of, of the city of Pensacola. A lot of great things going on right now. A lot of great development going on. And, uh, it's coming in our district, it's coming in our district and it's coming pretty fast. And, uh, I want to make sure that you guys are a part of that because this is, this is your home. This is where you live. This is your community. So we want to ensure that, uh, safety is paramount. Again, the fire, they're doing a great job. First responders, uh, you guys are doing a great, a great job and you rock. And thank you so much. Again, thank you all for coming out. If you have any other questions, we'll stick around a little bit more. And Mr. Go.
I'd like to extend an invitation to everybody here. Um, my friend Michael Allen is opening up the famous bars on the blocks. So the Money Club will open next Saturday, February the fourth. It'll have, um, blues on the rocks from five to seven. Uh, Cat Day is gonna be there. Uh, and, uh, so, uh, and by the way, the, the funding for things, um, uh, John Russell did a great job. Uh, he explained that things would be around career jobs, jobs. Now, uh, Councilman Wiggins, I think you got seventy-six thousand dollars in lighting. Unless the mayor grabbed it now. I'm not gonna ask you, but if he does, then maybe she can use that to put, uh,
Absolutely.
You know, the poles are most expensive, I think, but, uh, there are, uh, poles of lights on, on the main, but they're not working. And light needs a pole zone, uh, government. And so, uh, but anyway, uh, you've already been in our class. We've already had a congressman getting some air stuff. We just want to get the rest of it, okay?
Thank you so much. And again, thank you all so much for coming out. Thank you.